Good evening, I'd like to call the Town of Hebron Board of Selectmen regular meeting to order at seven o'clock. We could rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple changes to the agenda, Andy, if you wanted to go over those or?
Mr. Chairman, I'd add an item for audit reports after the town manager's report. Seventy.
Okay.
And then I'd like to add to the executive session. Letter C, personal matter, revenue collecting.
Okay. Any objections to adding seventy and thirteen C as stated?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the board of selectmen. The board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the board respects the right of the public to provide comment, this time is not intended for open discussion or board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should make arrangements to do so through the town manager's office or the board chair. Persons online wishing to comment should type comment and your name in the chat box and you will be recognized.
There is no one on line.
Okay. Any public comments? Okay. That brings us to number five, good to know. Paul. Welcome.
Basically, we've been getting a lot of calls for signage on roadway, so basically I'm just gonna let you guys know what the proper procedures are. Basically, you're gonna call, the resident will call up the Public Works Department or they can contact Andy. Now, obviously, we can make a work order out. And then we have a manual on uniform traffic controls, a booklet we had to go buy, we can't just throw a sign up on the roadway, so. And Andy is the LTA, Legal Traffic Authority for the town, he went to class and such, so. And long story short here, basically, that's how we do signage, very basic. Once Andy approves it and the manual, uniform traffic control, and then we put the signage up. So, okay, that's it in short.
Is that for town and state roads or is there?
For us, for Public Works, it's strictly town.
Okay.
State, you've got to go through the state and.
State DOT.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Basically, people are asking us to put up like watch roads on the roadways and stuff, and we can't do that anymore, it's illegal to put up those signage.
It's not.
They're not supposed to be in the roadway to begin with, so. That's basically, because we got a call from a lady in a cul-de-sac and she was very concerned about the kids playing in the cul-de-sac, I said, you know, I said, I understand, I said, we're all kids at one point in time and we all did that, I said, but we cannot put up signage saying, watch for kids in roadway. But we did put up a speed limit sign for her, she called us back and thanked us very much, because there's a lot of cars were flying down the roadway, you know, so. Any other questions about signage?
Yes, sure. Every once in a while, and I know another town that had an issue where they arbitrarily set their own speed limits, how are speed limits covered?
By the state of Connecticut.
Okay.
And then if there's any issues, like they go through Legal Traffic Authority and they talk with the person that's the legal traffic authority, maybe bring it, if the state says fifty miles an hour, you know, okay, that's way too, you know, fast for this area, we can bring it down.
But that is a state issue, not a town issue.
Well, for the speed limits, we could set them down, I believe, well, right Andy?
What it is is, the first thing he referred to is a manual, and I answered Tiffany's question. We have to follow the manual, that's the guide where it's approved by Ashdod and the state and the federal government for for signs, whether it be children that play driveway, blind driveway, there's certain signs that used to be allowed, that are no longer allowed. As far as the speed limit, they use it called a eighty percentile, they do a traffic count and that counts the number of cars and the speeds that the cars are going. And they want you to fall within that eighty percentile of what that speed is, because if a car is doing forty miles an hour and you want to put that to a twenty-five, you're pretty much gonna cause your own problem. An occasion like we did, E Street here in this town, they felt the people were speeding, we put the park out there and the shoulders are narrow, so the people did request myself as the town manager, Legal Traffic Authority, to ask the state to reduce that. We submitted a letter, they did a study, and they didn't reduce it all the way down to what we suggested, but they did lower it at least by five miles an hour, so we did get some satisfaction, so in some cases it will work with the municipalities, but they'll come back and do another study.
And then one last question, and it's not your area, it's a state road, but on sixty-six, are those dashed lines, is that for a bicycle?
Well, they did put lines out there, it's for, they're making, they're breaking the traffic in the bicycles out, because right there, you're coming up the hill, especially if you're coming from, say, Marlboro, and those dash marks, they're actually gonna put the white lines back up, it is brown down the roadway for to put the new epoxy lines down.
Okay.
Yeah. So give them, give them some time.
But that is for bicycles?
Yeah, the bicycles are gonna take the ride of those lines when it's done.
Okay.
So give them, give them some time to do all that, unless it's gonna be a week or however they do it.
I kind of assumed that's what it was for, but it was.
Sometimes, sometimes they do like a green paint on the side.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Could be costly doing green paint every year, you know, so.
They did that, okay.
I didn't know they were doing it, I guess, I woke up and wondered like, okay, they did it. I'm surprised it's.
Well, the green is easy to see though, right, like, I mean, it's pretty, I think the green paint is a little bit easier when you have a bike lane, just because I'm on my book and I know it's a bike lane, so.
Well, that, yeah, yeah.
You know, you're right, with the line, you're like, I'm gonna stay away from it, but yeah.
Yeah, it does wear down faster, I mean, that's, that's the thing, like, the plows take it off in a couple of years. Sometimes it's also nice just to have like that, that bike
symbol.
Symbol in there, right? Yeah, well, you know, yeah, thank you for all the information, and, you know, I'm sure that the public appreciates it, and any other questions, they can forward along to Andy and it'll all get passed along.
I'd like to do another presentation in the fall, like, probably December, about plough and snow, so you guys are aware of how we do things and why we do things. This way, if you guys get any calls from residents, like, yeah, what are they doing this for, you guys will have some, like, why we do things, so.
Perfect.
Well, these are.
That sounds good.
Thank you. No problem, thank you guys.
Have a great day.
Thanks.
Great weekend. That brings us to section six, appointments and resignations. Attached is a letter from Elizabeth Fitzgerald, if you could read the motion, Dan?
Sure. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen to appoint Elizabeth Fitzgerald to the Douglas Library Board of Trustees for a term to run until December two thousand twenty-eight.
Awesome, any discussion?
I'd just like to just take a moment and note that I've known Beth for some time now, she's an incredibly dedicated public servant, we're lucky to have her, and I want to thank her for coming forward.
Agreed. And I actually, I read it, it was like Elizabeth, okay, blah blah, I didn't realize it was Beth. That's all I ever knew, we're buying Beth, I guess people have other names.
Yeah, I'd like also to add my enthusiastic support of her appointment, she's a terrific person, as is her husband, looking forward to her continued success in the public world.
Awesome. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Danny Larson?
Danny Larson, aye.
Charlotte Fitzgerald?
Charlotte Fitzgerald, no relation, aye.
Tiffany Teely?
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Claudia Riley?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye. It's unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to section seven. Town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The town manager's report, we still are continuing to do union negotiations for the DPW. Hopefully coming close to an end at the beginning, but so far so good. We're gonna be meeting first, I guess, the second, eleven. We opened the bids, I'm glad to report, for the revow for the two thousand twenty-six year. And the bids, the two bids that we received, which is pretty much the norm for companies, and we came in under the budgeted amount, so that's good news. Planning continues in the town manager's office, interviews were set up for next Thursday for the administrative assistants in the town manager's office. And the panel is Danny Larson, Donna Lanza, and Lisa from town of East Hampton, she's a longtime HR person for East Hampton. And I don't know, I think some of you recognized or saw the email that was circulated that we're gonna be doing some paving at the senior center and Hope Valley Road, so we're looking forward to that, hoping the weather will cooperate with Plow and contractors. Very busy working with the building committee on multiple projects, school roofs, RAM generator bids, and DPW engineering staff. So that continues to keep us occupied. We're working on both the SRO contracts with RAM and Hebron to update those numbers and get those, those becoming a part of the board of selectmen for approval once they're finalized. And we received a grant from DEEP for the volunteer fire department, the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars for hose and hose appliance, it's something we applied for. I talked to the chief today, it was actually two years ago. But it just came through, we just got notified today, so we were a little bit surprised, but.
Was that the one for the hydrant adapters or?
Well, I mean, appliances, good, but.
It was just something he applied, I'm not sure what he applied for, was it a hose adapter or was it just hose?
I can't remember if it was that long ago or.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
I know we're trying to hopefully get one of the stretchers, I talked to him today, that should be coming due, we're checking on that, they're reviewing that application, I'm speaking. That's what I have.
Awesome, okay, thank you. Andy, any question about SRO contract negotiations?
Sure.
It's that, also including the three new positions at RAM that they were approved for in this year's budget? Or are they still working, God prescriptions and all that, those new machines?
So I wouldn't know that, those are gonna fall in the RAM's jurisdiction, the ones that I'm talking about are our regular police officers.
Oh.
So it would only, the only one I'm negotiating with is even elementary schools and the even police officers that, that RAM, I don't know.
And you don't handle that?
No.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, seventy, Laura?
Yes, so Andy and some of the members asked me to come and explain an email that was forwarded to you from the OPM from the MFAK. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of an overview about what that means and how it is that we're responding. So statutorily, OPM is required to send out notification to all elected officials if a municipality's audit is six months late, which as we know, ours is six months late. There's a form that we have to fill out, and I left each one of you a copy. Not too difficult, it asks us to identify areas that detail why the audit is late. And then they ask us what our remedial action is going to be to try to fix those issues. And then they ask us when we think we're gonna have an audit ready for their review. So in the email that I sent to Andy, and I don't know if that was distributed, I'm kind of hoping not, because I talked about some personnel issues in there, but.
That was distributed, because I'm looking at it right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm gonna say the biggest issue that we're late this year has to do with the fact that we've had an incredible amount of staff turnover. When I came here, there was a gentleman by the name of Kevin who had some good accounting background, and he was a good finance guy, he only stayed a couple additional months and desired it was time for him to retire for good and go seek some other non-job opportunities. We hired a few people after that. They chose not to stay, I did do exit interviews on both the candidates. And I think what we need to look for is somebody who has a little upper level skill set than the clerical person that we have in one of our positions. And contemplate maybe paying up a little bit for that person so that we could attract somebody that has at least some accounting skills. This job is not normal to what other finance people outside of the municipal arena are used to, a lot of people just maybe have one or two tasks during the week. And here, they might be doing eight different things in one day, it's not voluminous, it's time consuming. And there is a learning curve, so I can understand how it gets frustrating for some of those people, excuse me. So I'm hopeful that if I put together a draft, very draft job description, that the board and Andy might contemplate, you know, moving that up a little bit. Second problem we've had is, as we know, in two thousand and nineteen, we migrated to a new financial software system. At that time, not all of the components were set up correctly. By not setting up those components correctly, it caused a snowball effect, and you can see that through the management letters over time. Started out being this big, and then the next year it was this big, and the next year is this big. So we have taken corrective action with that, we've spent a lot of time with our software vendor, the actual person that helped set us up back in two thousand and nineteen. Andy's been spending about four hours a week for the past six or seven weeks going deep into the system to fix how our encumbrances were over because they weren't rolling over correctly. Our accounts payable, they were being booked to incorrect years, which caused us to make a significant amount of correcting entries. Uh, yeah, the system is not accounting for encumbrances correctly, we're, we are almost there. The auditors are coming in to do their field work for two weeks, beginning August eighteenth. We had a conference call yesterday, they're pretty confident that we can get an audit issued by the last day of September, which would make me really happy because now I'm doing the twenty-five audit concurrently. So am I worried about us working with OPM and MFAK in terms of reporting? I'm not, because what it does is, since it requires us to report on a monthly basis, it's gonna keep me accountable to continue to keep moving forward to correct those issues.
Questions? Now, this, this new software, we're not the only entity using it in town, correct?
So the Board of Ed also uses Tyler ERP, Tyler ERP based on the Board of Ed. So it's a very similar system, but they use different components than the town does. There are not many towns in the state of Connecticut that use the Tyler i-visions, Munis is probably the biggest one, and this is a Munis product. But it's not a very popular one, so I don't have the ability to call on my peer group, you know, to come sit with me to say, okay, what do you think this problem is, or what should we do? And that's why we're spending the extra time learning the backend of the system.
Our other group, if I remember right, they just bailed.
We just bailed.
The entity, the software company that we're using before.
Oh, yes, we use Phoenix, and at the end of two thousand and eighteen, I believe they said, we're done, we're not gonna support anything anymore, and that's it.
How is this company for stability?
The company, it's huge, so it's, it's all over the country, everybody uses Munis. Outside of Connecticut, it's one of the most popular systems.
Okay.
So I'm not worried about them going, you know, going under anytime soon.
Okay, I just so many times these companies come up, great, you know, everybody jumps on board and then they disappear.
It was a surprise to all of us, Phoenix had been around for decades, yeah, you probably remember Tiffany. Yeah, they had been around for decades, so it was a surprise to all of us in the business when they just said, you know, we're just not gonna do this anymore.
I have some questions, so with respect to the software, and maybe the engineers working on this currently, is there a way to create guardrails? So if there's data that's, that's like the variance is different, like we talked about year after year, there was a particular balance that keep growing. Is there any kind of guardrail that would tell us, you know, caution, this is a variant that is?
That, that would be in the annual audit, it would be notated in the annual.
But there's nothing done like for, like in real time?
No.
Doesn't that seem to you like a software deficiency?
Not really, because one of our jobs at the end of the year, we have about thirty, sixty, ninety, I usually take about ninety to a hundred and twenty days to close the books. Because we're still getting invoices coming in, we're still getting revenue coming in, we're still paying bills. You really have to just keep, keep watching and keep a better look.
A look. It needs to be done, yeah.
Um, I think you just have to pay more attention to them.
I think it's the answer. The ban of staff just for them to do that.
We're very thinly stacked all over town, but it's impossible with just me and a clerical person who does payroll and AP. One of the things I've been trying to do, and, and, you know, this, this is my fault, I asked Andy to not post right away because I wanted to take the opportunity to actually learn those functions of that person. Because I've been getting the sense that there's really an extra three or three hours or so in a day where somebody could help me. And the other gentleman did assist the prior finance director, so I want to make sure this time, I'm not selling myself short, and if if the work hour is really three and a half to four hours a day, then I would like to be able to utilize that person for upward level work for a couple hours a day. That didn't work out, so.
So he can use an analogy, so basically, the house is already on fire. Putting the hose on, I guess.
No, I, I think we do really need to contemplate spending, spending the time, you know, it's time, spending the time, and maybe, you know, considering a salary change to attract the type of professional that we need, because it's really not a clerical or administrative function anymore.
Can you remind me again when the previous finance director left?
So Kevin, I, I like to say I started in March, May, I wanna believe Kevin was here till maybe May or June.
We are talking his name.
Correct, yeah, when did she leave?
Oh, the finance director.
Yeah.
She left in March of two thousand and twenty-four.
So, so you, you came on full-time right in March?
Actually came on full-time in December to get pregnant for a few months, yeah, yeah. But that was her, her last, her last day.
And so the audit, the red flags didn't occur until an actual audit happened. Or a lack of, I guess.
So the twenty-three audit came in on time, and I had a chance to scour that audit. And started formulating a plan to try to address some of the issues with Andy that were in that audit. But they continued to go, because we had those issues. And because of staff, you know, most of it really was, we had about a hundred transactions of AP that had to be booked back to a prior year. And, you know, I'll be honest with you too, yes, I was a finance director in a large city, and yes, I had deputies and I had a large staff, so my learning curve has also been a year long, I'm probably eighty percent there, but you know, I'm taking twenty percent of it is me not knowing that, oh my God, I had to take, you know, I had to take a due-to, due-from and charge it over here, so that's why we have the consultant that's, you know, helping us fix all that, get a process and procedure manual going. So we're doing our best.
Okay. I'm just asking questions.
No, no.
To understand.
No, no, feel free, I mean. Yes.
One other question with respect to a new position, once it's created, would you consider in order, in order for us to attract the best candidates, the ones with the right background and the training and the education, it seems like we lacked that previously, or maybe the attrition issue?
So we tried, we tried for the bachelors with the background and all of that stuff. And the young lady would have been very good, but decided municipal work was not something that she was interested in doing and went back into the corporate life. Then we hired somebody internally who wanted to grow, and her exit interview, it was just too much. So she enjoyed doing two or three things all the time and multitasking.
Would you consider someone working remotely in the position to attract the larger candidate pool?
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, for this type of position, it is hands-on, we have people coming in. Everything is documents, everything is paper. Yeah, I wish, but, yeah. I don't think so, I don't know, Andy, do you ever thought about that?
Not this time, no.
Yeah.
We're gonna revisit it and see what we could do, but bring it back, recruit for the board, but we need to get somebody in here to, you know, in our finances.
Clear.
Correct the measure.
Yeah. If we could get somebody that could help do the day-to-day, that's competent doing the day-to-day, that would allow me more time to do a little bit of the upper level stuff.
Yeah.
Thank you, I have a couple of questions, and I want to thank you for coming, and the reason I wanted you to come is that I think it's important that these meetings are used to share this kind of information, because taxpayers need to understand what's happening, why the audit's late.
Absolutely.
Because they fund our government, and so I think the more transparent we are in these issues, the better. So I note that the auditors had cited that the town does not have a formal year-end closed process and procedure, can you elaborate on that, please?
Right, so there's probably forty steps at least that have to be taken between May and September of October of each year. There's no formal document that details how that needs to be done. So I have been spending the past couple of months working on that with the help of GFOA, with the help of a Tyler group that I belong to that share all their documentation. And unfortunately, Caitlin is leaving, but she also has spent two years during her close, what she has shared with me. So I'm starting just to manipulate that to the town side from the Board of Ed side because it's very similar.
Did you have a formal year-end closed process and procedure at your previous position?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're an outlier in terms of not having a written procedure in place for this.
Yeah, you know, I don't know if it's small town, I haven't worked in, in small towns, so I don't know if it, if it's a function of small town or lack of time or but, no, there, there is not one currently.
And that's something that's historic, right, it's not like you walked in and threw out a document that had this, you walked in and there was no written document in place for those policies and procedures. So that's concerning to me as a select woman, because we need to empower our people for success, and I'm very sorry that that wasn't in place for you. So my second question is that the auditors also cited that the town does not have adequate processes and procedures in place, which is kind of vague. So are they saying that to just, do they, do they have specifics that they're gonna share with us, is that just like a general catchall?
I, I think what the I take that to mean from my other life is that every department should have a process and procedure, right, with details on how to do the thing. Donna has this extraordinary document that she's putting together, it just doesn't say, I do this with insurance, it's, I do this with insurance, and this is how I do it, and this is where you find it, and here's a copy of this.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm attempting to get departments to do. So it's not just within the finance department, it's town as a whole that might want to adopt that practice going forward.
So what you're saying is that other town departments don't have the kind of documentation that the auditors are citing?
I'm not sure, they don't look at, at other. I'm not sure. They don't look at at other, um. At other towns, but the way I look at it is, you know, we're all. We're an older population, an older work population here. And in the other place that I worked at, it's very hard to transition someone and have them hit the ground running. If you don't know where to start.
Right.
Well, I thank you for sharing the information in public, in a public setting, so people can hear what's going on. Um, I'm sorry that you have to work on. Two audits at the same time. Um, and I also feel like the large problem here to address is that if we are going to have new employees start here, we need to empower them for success. And I think the fact that there wasn't a written year-end closed process and procedure for you to refer to, I don't think that's acceptable. Um, but thank you for sharing this information with us here today. I appreciate it.
I I'll work my best to get something solid by by the end of the next time.
Sure.
Cause I heard it. It's got it's going down.
But you should have had it already is how I feel about it. But thank you for all the work that you're doing. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think they've covered it. Um, just one one quick. I just want to make sure again, relative new to this, the audit has nothing to do with the town's financial solvency and we're solid.
The audit does have everything to do with the town's financial solvency. Um, but we are in a really, really good place. We have an adequate fund balance to weather the storms. Um, we have delightful ongoing conversations about what that percentage should be, but, you know, this year it'll be based on what. How much the administration's decision is going to hurt communities and municipalities, but we're one hundred percent full. OPM is not worried about that at all. Um, they just want to see that we're making a proactive effort to get. Fully staffed and to be able to get audits done on time.
Hmm.
Yeah, but we're not and and it's not that I'm playing it off. We're certainly not the only ones. I can't tell you how many. Audits early. You can go on the state website and and see how many audits early. Everyone's having the same problem. Can't find finance directors, can't find auditors, can't find, you know, and the municipal sector is a lot different than than corporate auditing is. Um, and I don't know what your experience is Keith of.
In governmental accounting?
No, I mean, in finding and retaining and attracting.
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's what I mean. Because because governmental accounting is is very different from corporate accounting. Uh, you know, it it's not as glorious. It has a whole bunch of extra, uh. You know, hurdles that you have to jump through.
It doesn't pay.
It doesn't pay. Um, and and, you know. I mean, I know, depending on the the corporate business you work for. The standard is is accrual accounting, you know, but governmental is more of a modified cash, which is. Why people have such a hard time when when honestly, when we get applicants from the corporate side, I tell them upfront, I'm like, you're going to have six months. Where you're beating your head against the wall because it's not the way you know it. Um, and that's just getting used to modified cash.
Modified accrual.
Yeah.
And then we have budget basis, then we have cash basis, and then we have accrual basis.
Yeah, and and they're they're not used to that on the corporate side. So it's, you know, once you get someone. Who is good at governmental accounting, you gotta you gotta hold on to them.
Um, but you got somebody out there you're willing to give up?
No. We're looking to. Um, but yeah, I I will, I will, if you're if you're good.
Yeah.
I will reiterate, um, you know, some of the things that have been said before, like the procedures are are paramount. Um, yes, our town, especially when compared with surrounding towns, is an extremely good financial position. And that's because of, you know, the board of selectmen have come before us and the board of finances have come before us and and set us up for success, but, um. You know, one thing about auditing is is that. If if it's not on paper and it's not orderly, then it's not there, whether it's there or not. Not there. Um, so from an auditor's perspective, if if your documents don't match. Or you don't have documents.
Mm hmm.
You may as well just go home because you're not doing it right. So I I will reiterate that emphasis on not just, it's especially important in the financial. Areas of town governance, but even in operational and other areas of of the town, having that. You know, booklet that people can go back to as a reference and having those procedures. Um, you know, it it makes a huge difference. And so whatever efforts we can put towards getting those established, you know, across the board. Is just going to help our our community be more resilient and thrive. Um, I do agree. I think we should, you know, look at the job description and kind of bat things around and and see what we can do. Um, and and hopefully make things a little bit more appealing for competent candidates. Uh, thank you for all your efforts on getting this resolved and, um. We look forward to to hearing from you in the future.
Appreciate that. Anytime.
Thank you, Laurie.
I just want to throw a plug in. I think knowing our town staff and. The amount of work that very few people do, I brought it up time and time again. We are going to have to eventually get more money and more personnel. Because everything is getting more difficult and and more, uh. Paper or or more documented documented. Uh. And as as a result, it requires people to do the input and to do the work and, you know. Our our staff, for what they're being paid, I think do a tremendous job. But we're gonna have to eventually find a way. And then the taxpayers are the ones that they're going to have to kind of carry the load. We're gonna have to start paying these people. Otherwise, they're just going to revolve in door.
Yep.
Mm hmm.
I agree.
Hmm. But I will say this, I think what we're trying to address here is the attrition issue. Without attrition, we have gaps and then we're playing catch up the whole time.
Okay, well, I didn't remember again, you know, you you whether it's the fire department or whatever, you know, people go, they'll get trained and then they go through more ways. And, you know, the reality is we, as as a federal community, don't have. The the, uh, financial resources to be able to keep some of these people. Um, you know, so they come, they get trained and they leave for for more money, the bigger communities and all. And I don't know how you fight that.
Well, I think there are twenty, twenty-five solutions to nineteen. Just have to. Embrace them.
Mm hmm.
You know, it's the dawn of the day where you're posting job openings on indeed.com. Like it's just not working.
Yeah, definitely.
We have to be more creative. And considering either a remote or a hybrid position might be something. Okay.
Thank you. That brings us to eight old business. Uh, no updates on ARPA. Um. The pickleball courts are done, right? Uh, um, what else is, the dog park is still outstanding. What else is still outstanding for ARPA?
I'm working on the dog park. Most of the security stuff. Uh, skateboard parks done, might have done. So you have an idea what's outstanding? Then we drilled the well.
Yes.
Uh. We expected the dog park to go up, probably by a month's time. They're doing the park a lot now. The fence guy said it's only needs about a week. Like I said, the well's in. Oh. I don't.
Peter's house?
Yeah. Peter's house, we're getting some stuff done. We're not much. No, we're rounding up on it pretty well.
Good. Um, and just for those people tuning in at home, all those funds have to be expended by this December. So you're well on track for that.
Yeah, yeah. I anticipated.
No, it's December twenty-five. Had to be committed.
By twenty-four.
Yes, and spent by twenty-five.
Twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth.
I don't know.
We can check.
Sure.
We'll talk.
Um. All right. Uh, the public, Department of Public Works Action Committee update? Richard, now.
Go ahead. You start out the video.
Good evening, everyone. Um, just to follow up the email I sent to everybody. Uh, Langen Associates, which are environmental engineers, will have their. Environmental site assessment, also known as an ESA Phase One completed. Probably the end of this month or very early August. Uh, correction on the second item that I sent in my email to your board was. Uh, request was made of both Paul, myself, uh, from the hazardous material. Consultant from Langen. They originally were hoping to be there Friday and next week to take samples of asbestos lead, ECVs. Unfortunately, they did warn us at our meeting that we had Monday night. That they had a school that was at open in end of August.
Hmm.
And they're the environmental consultant, they were into vehicles thing, were really concerned about getting some air clearance. Unfortunately, the air clearances on that school came back unacceptable, so they are. Putting all hands up deck on that project. They said we need to push off the testing until middle of August. Which is not impactful. I mean, they're they're they hit the ground. So that's one thing that we'll we'll get results on that later.
Okay.
And the other thing that Mal sent out was, um, I see two stamatics that were put forward by, uh, uh, the civil engineer. So that would be like the first kind of. Uh. Presentation. All of the little boxes that you see are are based on space needs analysis that still we're better selling out. Paul, Mary Rose, that's again, the other members of.
If I can add to that, Richard. When you look at those drawings and you see five yellow lines going through the garage, that doesn't mean five or ten trucks. Oh, hey, just put the lines up.
Thank you.
It it the the space size, as Richard just said, is based on requirements. Claudia was with us that, uh, at the meeting. Were you there?
I was there for the first time.
Yeah, you you were there at that point, but the specific question was asked, does that mean we can only put ten trucks in this garage? And the garage will hold all the trucks as well as a maintenance bay and a wash bay. Good. So more to come.
Awesome.
Yeah, we did, uh, if you're finished with the technical stuff, the technical guy here. I just wanted to talk about the discussion that we had and and Claudia stayed around for it. We're getting to the point now where we're starting to get information and we want to be able to share information. We did have the. Town attorney join us for about twenty minutes, fifteen to twenty minutes, and give us some ideas of what we can do and what we should avoid. But the bottom line is, is. We've got to get information out. And when I say we, I'm talking about us and you. So we would like to, and we don't have to go any further with it tonight, but we would like to arrange time in the very near future to meet with you. Whether it be at one of your meetings, one of our meetings, at a special meeting, at a workshop, to discuss the education process. The pros, the cons, and most importantly, the timeframe. I think they'll all agree. That we can't wait till a month before the referendum and start educating.
Mm hmm.
And right now it looks like, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they're going to be through, they're going to be pretty much complete with design development. Late February, early March, definitely.
Yeah.
And we will have everything then, but it doesn't mean we have to wait till then. But what we would like from you is with that information, we would like for you to 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 discuss. When and how is this going to be go to the public in terms of referendum? Is it going to go in May with the budget? Is it going to go at a different time? Uh, because that only not only gets the public focused. But it gets our professionals focused. We needed, we need to be able to, Claudia heard me the other night say. We need to have a date that we can point at and say, we need to be able to do this by then. So, and again, not tonight. But if you could put on your agenda to discuss timeframes as to when you want the public. Not only just start hearing information, but to vote, that would be helpful to the process.
And I will say this. Both of you as representatives of the Action Committee, I deeply appreciate you being here all the time. Giving the surprise of activities and updates. It's been amazing. And to me, that helps just keep us in in support of the project. And I feel like what you do serves as a model of how work should go. Going forward with all kinds of important initiatives that the town is doing, the collaboration, the communication, the transparency, it just leads to. Great outcomes. And that, to me, also was reflective of how we did all the budget workshop. In the end of twenty-four and early twenty-five, it was collaboration, there was discussion. So I think that ultimately led to a successful passage of the referendum in May. And same, I want to see the same outcome for this.
Thank you. It's interesting because somebody said to me as we're walking out of this room Monday night, well, how much information should we send, share with the board of selectmen? And I said, one word, everything. I would rather move for them to tell Mal, uh, stop, stop, this is enough.
Yeah.
And as members, you can be selective on what you reveal and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I agree. I think that Ken's, uh, Ken's comments. Were largely in favor of the subcommittee reporting back to the Board of Selectmen. And, well, you know, I appreciate that in email, but I also, I love that that you guys attend all the time, but I would I would. Be very happy for a larger portion of the subcommittee or for a larger presentation. Um, to happen, you know, somewhat more frequently with us, let's say quarterly, until we get. To where we want to be more than quarterly, uh, so that it keeps it fresh in the public's mind because, um. You know, again, I don't want to be springing things on them at the last minute. I hope that they see a presentation. On the Board of Selectmen meeting and start asking questions or start making public comment. Because, you know, we make a lot of decisions in a vacuum when people don't show up. So, um, yeah, I I would let the subcommittee know that the Board of Selectmen. If if you're all in agreement, uh, would like to see you at least quarterly. And as we get closer to that, you know, referendum, possibly more often.
Let me make a proposal to you. Um, one of the things I did mention, I was going to mention before we're done here, is we did discuss the other night. The opportunity to go to the, uh, even fair. Ask for booths. Obviously, it's going to have to be no charge because we can't spend that money, but ask for booths. And by that time, we hope that we're going to have all this environmental information and things like that. And we would, uh, we would like to do something there. Why don't we put together something for you, a presentation, whatever you want to call it. Um, at your second meeting in August. And let you know what we know at that point and essentially what we will bring to the fair.
Hmm.
And we would, uh, you know, we'll let you know where we're going to be and what we're going to do. And we would certainly welcome your participation in the booth. Um, during the fair and we'll work out all the scheduling later.
Hmm.
But, um, that's what was said in the meeting the other night because we talked about. We have sessions where people can come in. And the bottom line is, is we need to go where the people are. Not look for the people to come to us. And one of the documents Richard sent you was a list of stakeholders. And we would love to want to go to their meetings with a representative. From the Board of Board of Selectmen, it could be Keith since he's on the committee, but it could be any of you. It should be any of you. To explain where we are, what we're doing and, you know, along with the formal presentations. So if you can think about that and put that on your agenda at some point, um, I think that would be a a good step going forward. So.
Okay.
Also, do you need anything from us to get the fair booth? Off the ground?
Yes. I need to find out who to call.
Well, I would suggest, I don't know if we need any kind of official action. Uh, but it wouldn't be a bad idea to have it. And then, yeah, Andy?
Scratch me, Andy. You probably would be better. Take, if you're willing, let me take the first step at it behind the scenes to see if we can work something out. We give in kind services to them as well. So. We might be as easy as a straw.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was one of the things I won't get to talk to. So I'll I'll wait, you know, Monday we can discuss more. Um, but that's.
Yeah, only because, as I say, the fair is literally just over a month away.
Right?
Mm hmm.
So it doesn't leave a lot of time for any, uh. You know, organization.
Like I said, that that just came up the other night and Andy and I have been playing PAG. He's been very busy the last week. Uh, and my timing has been. Uh, and my timing has been off, so we're we're going to be getting together on Monday to discuss that and a few other things. But, uh, we will have something for you in your second meeting in in August. And it'll essentially be what we're going to bring to the fair with us.
We envision three things. See, the environmental site assessment will have that. We'll also have the evaluation potentially of the hazardous material valuation building developments. And lastly, about time we get. The Hebron Harvest Fair, we might have a little bit more geoskinatic drawings, um, as far as. Where the architect with employed from EPW personnel. What the vision is starting to look.
Yeah, I think the visual will be very pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Pictures are.
Show up for a couple hours.
Great.
Ultimately.
And join us any third Monday of the month. You'll get all the all the agendas going forward. It's pleasure having you with us the other night. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other old business? That brings us to nine A. Uh, adoption of ordinance delegating the Board of Selectmen as authority for economic development incentive program. Uh, Sean. Do you have that motion here?
He does.
Excellent.
For the motion. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen schedule a public hearing for Thursday, August 21st. Twenty twenty-five at six forty-five P M. At the Hebron Town Office Building Lower Level Meeting Room. To receive public comment on the proposed ordinance delegating the Board of Selectmen as the authority for the Economic Development Incentive Program. Per CGS twelve dash sixty-five B.
So, uh, I'm just going to pass out. Uh, a letter provided by the town attorney. I will address it in a moment.
Thank you.
Uh, this is not in your packet. Came in today, sir.
Thank you. Welcome.
Right, so, uh, thank you. I'm Matt Ford, our planner. Um, just here to discuss with the board tonight. Um, as you're aware. We've had some discussions about the human economic development incentive program. And the, uh, desire to revisit the program, um. And, uh, discuss it with the Economic Development Commission and perhaps. Bring to your attention some recommend recommendations for improvements. Uh, that would be consistent with, you know, the needs of the community at this point, but also some changes in state legislation. Some of that is more related to, uh, decisions the town can make in terms of what's the best interest, you know, again, what's what's the most useful way? Moving forward with utilization of those statutes, but. This one, um, brought, you know, came to our attention because, um. Essentially, what it does is it it's doing. Language from Donna, it memorializes the role of the Board of Selectmen in the ability to execute tax abatement agreements. So Connecticut General Statute twelve dash sixty-five B is legislation that provides municipalities the ability to. Fix tax assessments for improvements on property. And provide essentially tax relief to new investments that come into town, right? It's an incentive to do to do business in town. Right now, the town, uh, utilizes that statute in. The Hebron Economic Development Incentive Program as a policy. And that's acceptable. Uh, however, when you read the statutes and these were, uh, updated via a public app, I believe it was in twenty twenty-two. We found that it might be appropriate. And and this would be an action of the Board of Selectmen, not necessarily waiting on a decision or a or a recommendation from the Economic Development Commission. Um, that we. Upgrade, um, the way we're doing things to. Again, memorialize the role of the Board of Selectmen as the legislative body that is, uh. Authorized to execute these agreements in the form of a ordinance. Rather than simply a policy. Um, again, it's it's acceptable the way it's it's functioning because our form of government by our charter. Assign certain tasks to the town meeting as legislative body and certain tasks to the Board of Selectmen. Um, in this case, the Board of Selectmen is authorized to adopt ordinances. There's a process for that. Um, and so essentially we're recommending that. The Board of Selectmen adopted ordinance that would authorize themselves and memorialize this role in the court of ordinances. So the document I just provided was a letter from the town attorney kind of, um. Reinforcing, uh, the new role or the, uh. The jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen to adopt ordinances. And the language that I provided in my memo as a recommended ordinance. I've yet to have reviewed by the town attorney, waiting to see if this is something that can action that the board would like to move forward. Um, in the event that the board did adopt an ordinance of this nature, you always have the ability based on whatever. Situation is to move that to town meeting. So, you know, if it's a grandiose request or it's a substantial project that is a little bit outside of the norm for us. You know, when you felt that warrants it more input, that's always the process that can be utilized by the board. And, uh. But I mean, that's that's essentially the process of it.
Uh, just just as a clarification. You were saying that this the ordinance has proposed had not been reviewed by the the town attorney?
Um, correct. So, um, the ordinance in my memo. Um, and I will just, I'll just, I'll just read it for you real quick. It's it's at the bottom of my memo, second page, top of the second page. Essentially, it kind of captures, uh, you know, it says. It is the mission of the Board of Selectmen to provide amongst other things, economic base that creates jobs and taxes and assistance to the community. I took that from your mission statement. Um, the Hebron Economic Development Incentive Program. Is adopted to offer tax abatement or other economic development incentives whereby the Board of Selectmen shall have the authority. To enter into written agreement fixing the assessment of personal property, real property or airspace. Which is subject to the agreement in accordance with the Connecticut General Statutes twelve dash sixty-five B as amended. So that would give us the, you know, that would that would keep us consistent with any future amendments to the statute. Um, it would point to the Economic Development Incentive Program. That can be manipulated, not manipulated, but but updated over time. Um, again, like I said, you know, whatever is in the best interest of the community, whatever, you know, approach we thought was the best. You know, there's a lot that the statutes enable. Does it mean that it's all appropriate for us? But it would, it would point to both of those things without spelling the entire program out in an ordinance. Would allow us to kind of make the updates, but we would still, again. Just identify the fact that the even. At, uh, Board of Selectmen are the are the legislative body that makes those agreements. That's it's really just, you know, provide consistency with state statute and. A little bit more clarity, I think, for anybody who wants to, um. Better understand the program.
And again, to reiterate, if there was a a. Massive type project that came before us, we could solicit input from a town meeting. Form of information gather.
I would say it'd be more than an information gathering. I mean, you would prepare, well, you would, if if you were to. Decide that this is a a question that's beyond the scope of. Or or maybe, you know, he's said in the past, the chairman said in the past. It's awkward, I guess, you know, in some cases for the board to be making decisions that impact future boards, you know, that extend beyond the scope of, you know.
Right.
Your term or whatever it might be, whatever a comfortable scope for you. So, yeah, if you, if if it was at that scale or that scope. Then the board could decide, well, you know, this is probably a better decision to be made by town meeting, which case then you have a public hearing. Move to town meeting, there's the information that had to be shared, you know, in advance of that.
That's cool.
Okay.
As long, I I mean, I would love to have the formalized ordinance before the meeting. So that we could look at it, but I've been, we have a few meetings in between then.
Yeah, so so what do. Should look, but what what do we recommend in terms of a a public hearing?
The twenty-first, the twenty-first.
So it could be manipulated and, you know, prior to that, right?
I just, I just don't. Because it hasn't been reviewed, so we just don't want to say, yep, this is the ordinance, let's talk. If we have, we have, there's, if as long as there's wiggle room, I mean, I'm I'm. Asking if we have the ability to massage it as needed.
It happens, right?
There's time. Right now, we're really just setting the date for the public hearing. But that ordinance will need to be reviewed. It will need to be. You know, format that will be going to the public hearing. It will need to be published ahead of time. So the language will need to be.
Okay, but so my main question being, you feel this is enough time for you folks to do that?
Yeah, I I I don't think this will be a heavy lift. I mean, this is, this is something I want to review by the town attorney. If there's any feedback you have right now, I think it would be very helpful. For me to kind of consider that and share that with the town attorney. Um, but, uh, but otherwise, I think what I tried to do is, again. Sign the role to the board, but leave flexibility so that the program can evolve. And that we are always consistent with the state statute.
Yeah, I I. I, um, I agree because I think. In in a lot of cases, less is more, especially when there's already state statute outlining it.
Right.
So, I mean, um, yeah, as far as feedback from me personally. Just, you know, the nuts and bolts of. Setting us as the authority and referring back to state statute, like let's keep it clean, simple. And, uh. And we will let future boards figure out how they wish to use that power.
Conceptually, I think, yeah, I think we're all on board, conceptually, so.
We we had to do something because the policy that we have now from the E D C doesn't incorporate some of the new statute upgrades. So that's why we're sitting. And the bottom line is really where we're trying to. It just makes it more transparent for. The selectmen, whoever they are, to either make the decision on on a study. But it's a financial basis to the benefit of town. We're sent into a town meeting with a public hearing. Okay, so it gives you the option, but we're we're trying to, the policy doesn't cover with the thirty year now. Only know a few other things, so we're trying to get it to be more in line. But what we have now is sufficient.
Cool. Okay, thank you. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye, oppose nay, or extensions, uh, Dan Larson. Because. Dan Larson, aye. Sean Fitzgerald. Sean Fitzgerald, aye. Tiffany Teal.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Claudia Riley.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Keith Bennett, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to nine B. Uh, we are going to be discussing the Ram Emergency Generator. Tiffany, if you could do the motion for nine B.
Certainly. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen reject all bids received for the pre-purchase of the emergency electrical generator. For the Ram Generator project due to inconsistencies in the bids received. The project should be rebid as soon as.
Yeah, so the town recently received, um, received bids in response. To request for bids for the Ram Emergency Generator project. For the pre-purchase of the generator, attached the summary of the four bids received, also attached the recommendations from the Public Building Committee that the bids be rejected. And the project rebid, the town attorney has been consulted and advised it is appropriate to reject the bids. So what happened is we had total of four bidders and out of the four bidders, uh, two of the bidders were concerned. In at least one area of the bid and they didn't comply. Uh, the benefit for the town is one of the bidders that. Was in question, their numbers were almost half the price of the other bidders that weren't in compliance. So I think the attorney saw it the way the Board of, uh. Building Committee saw and I saw it in the in the financial basis of the town, even though the numbers are out there, it was like half the amount of money. So I think it's just in our. Best interest for the community is to rebid that. Unfortunately.
Richard additional?
Thank you. All just some background. After being out the bid for four weeks on this project, we took the numbers earlier this month. Uh, I just want to share you some of the background. There were some mandates are very clear in our bid package. One of the first was. That the bids were due the town manager's office by two o'clock on Monday, July seventh. Well, we had one bidder that sent their package on Saturday. That got lost by U P S. I'm reminded of the school teacher or the mom or dad that has a young child that had a book report, one that they started two nights or a night before. The consultant said. Why are we all so long? I said, well, we want to give everybody and, you know, more than adequate. On, not that they don't know what 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 these specifications say. Because they actually got an advanced copy of the specifications even a week and a half before we formed. So that one kind of couple members of the committee were really kind of. Put off while one of the bidders waited, sent their 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 bid in a bid. Legitimately did not arrive until the next day. They did send the A D A electronic, so that was a concern. One of the things that was very clear was that a bid bond was necessary. Not only was, it's not only what was necessary, it was dictated one of the first meetings that Al and I had with. The folks from Department of Economic and Community Development, the grantor of the funds was, you will. And no matter how you guys decide to parse up this project. Everything must be covered by a bid bond. That was very clearly outlined at two of the bidders. One bidder said, if I get the job, I'll give you a bid bond after the fact. Well. That's not how the process works. The other thing that was was required was a statements of man, uh, that move manufacturer vendors qualifications. It kind of gives the committee and some of the folks who don't know the manufacturers. What is their experience of doing projects of, you know, this is not going to be a small generator. This is very slightly underrated. Give give the committee a sense of what kind of work they did in the state of Connecticut and also those questions, what is the lead time after the shot talks? There were two of them. One more to completely didn't fill out, didn't submit, another one decided to answer some questions, not all the questions. Our overriding concern as a com- as a committee was, we wanted the bid process to be not questioned. We wanted to be competitive there. And the other concern that we had after we opened the bids, Al and I. The last thing we wanted to was make an overhead bid protest and have that issue taken over ahead. So. Andy and Donna sent our concerns to town attorney. They agreed. It was just too many issues here that. Was not worth the effort and trying. Selected that. Would bring us nothing but grief and all.
I can add to that, the E C D, the state agency also agreed to support.
All right. So. All those in favor, aye, and I vote will be to reject the bids. Uh, no or abstain. Uh, Dan Larson, Dan Larson, aye. Sean Fitzgerald.
Sean Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Teal.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Claudia Riley.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Keith Bennett, aye. It is re, the bids are rejected.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your work. And. Draft agenda is there for review. If anyone has any. Uh, adjustments or additions. Um, the items that were brought up under new business last meeting, you will see. Uh, some information went out for the selectmen to kind of digest in advance of next meeting. That will be on old business next meeting, uh, H C. With that, any other new business? Sir.
Chair. And in conjunction with Chloe's question about our resident trooper, um, he's going to be deployed. To Iraq, so we're going to have, we're going to have replacement, so. It's a woman trooper and she'll be assigned to even early August, so. We'll wait for her to come on and substitute if that's okay. So probably won't be for this, uh. Next agenda, I don't think she'll be ready yet.
Okay.
Understood.
Uh, that brings us to item ten, the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature. If anyone wants to have one of them removed from the votes, uh, let me know. It will be the approval of minutes, uh, for July third, twenty twenty five special meeting and the July tenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Does anyone want anything voted on separately? All right. With that, Claudia?
Uh, move that the Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted. The approval of minutes from July third, special meeting and approval of minutes July tenth.
Any comments? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye, oppose nay, or abstentions. Uh, Dan Larson.
Dan Larson, aye.
Sean Fitzgerald, Sean Fitzgerald, aye. Tiffany Teal.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Claudia Riley.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye. It passes unanimously. Uh, liaison reports A H M.
I have, um, nothing on A H M and also the board event is not met. So I'll take care of those first two.
Okay. Uh, Board of Finance.
Uh, they did not meet. Uh, so.
Excellent. Uh, land acquisition has not met since our last meeting as well. And there are some items that'll come up in executive session from the previous meeting. Uh, Ram Board of Ed?
Nothing to report.
Awesome. That brings us to public comments, uh, same format as earlier. If you're online, type comment in the chat. Any public comment?
Nothing online.
That will move us to section thirteen, uh, executive session. I would like to move that the Board of Selectmen enter executive session for a discussion of the Simiola property on Hope Valley Road, the Rifkin property on West Main Street, and also to discuss a personnel matter related to the revenue collector's position in town. We will also be inviting. Uh, oh, okay. We'll be inviting Matt and Donna and Andy.
Yep. You want to go?
Sounds good.
For the, uh.
For proportion, proportions of them. Yeah. Appropriate portions. All those in favor signify by saying aye, oppose nay, abstentions. Dan Larson.
Sean Fitzgerald.
Sean Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Teal.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Claudia Riley.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye, and we will enter executive session at eight thirteen.